So that's where we're at right now. I'll give you some, uh...
Are there any, um, supply additions?
There are not. Uh, at this point, we've ordered all of the materials. Uh, so there's some things that are, uh, on order and we haven't received yet, but they fit into the project schedule. So like windows, for example, um, are gonna be arriving in May. But, you know, the work we're doing on the outside, uh, we kind of, we want the masonry to go ahead of the windows because we don't wanna be cleaning masonry and getting any of the acids on the glass. So everything is working, you know, according to plan right now. And I, I know tomorrow night, we have a presentation of finishes. Um, so one finish that we're tracking is this granite tile in the lobby of, uh, the two buildings. It's about a twelve to fifteen week lead time. We won't know the actual lead until we place the order, but that's what we're tracking. So that's a kind of a long lead, but we're gonna present to the building committee tomorrow night. We believe that's gonna be approved, and with that, the architect is committed to getting us their approval shortly thereafter, so the material can be ordered. So it's really the only two things that we're tracking right now. The electrical equipment I reported to you before, um, was delayed because we had to redesign, uh, but again, that, uh, delivery date has fallen in line with the schedule. Right now, it's gonna arrive in June. Uh, so we're now, today, we were talking about energizing permanent, uh, service sometime in July. So everything, again, is working into the, the overall schedule. So, you know, it's tight, but it should show up just in time. Okay? So here, uh, this is the time lapse video, uh, of the project. It's only twenty-two seconds long. There's one image per day on the project. This is the public safety building, just to give you a, uh, quick progression of the project. You can see, uh, if there's a good pace on the project, it's moving at a, at a nice rhythm. Our construction manager is doing a really good job of, uh, sequencing all the trades. Um, so there's, right now, we're running about fifty to, uh, you know, fifty to fifty-five workmen on the job, uh, at any given time, uh, which is, uh, pretty impressive. So this is just last week, uh, where they're at, and they've got almost all of the roof panels complete. That's a insulated panel that goes in, and then on top of that, they put sleepers and then another layer of roof sheathing, then the asphalt shingles go on top of that. So that's all gonna start next week.
Is that asphalt binder that's down there?
Yes, it's binder for a portion. That's the access road. It, it ends right at the bottom of the frame. It runs all the way past town hall, and we've bindered the, uh, parking lot to the rear of town hall. And part of that is through the winter, they wanted to make sure that the site was going to remain, you know, clean and not so muddy. We were sensitive to not wanting to track anything out on Route one fourteen. Also gives a good lay-down area for materials for parkering, parking, 'cause as the, both buildings move into, uh, their rough-in, we're expecting, uh, a little over a hundred, uh, workers on-site at any given time. So that's, the, the parking that we have right now in the front corner, which is the old parking lot of the, uh, golf course, can handle about fifty, but after that, we, we run out of room, so we're gonna need that space in the back. So we would rather park on, on the binder course.
Yeah. Thank you. Sure.
Cool. So, uh, just to show you a few pictures of the project, it's, uh, as it's coming along. You can see the crane's hoisting in one of the last remaining panels, uh, on the roof on the outside. The, um, booms, uh, that's the waterproofer that's putting the silver on the outside. That's the waterproofing. Up in front of that is gonna be the insulation, and then the, uh, brick will go in front of that. Uh, so there's another, multiple layers, say, gonna come in front of that. Uh, and you can see, you know, the building is really taking shape now, and a lot of what you see in the foreground is all the mason's staging area for mortar and their, uh, their materials. They're about to begin on the public safety. Uh, this is another view from the other corner away from Route one fourteen. The, uh, police is really largely this end of the building. The gable in the center, just off to the right edge, is the center of the building, the main lobby. And then out the rear, that one-story piece is the, um, Sally Ford and detention area of the police station. And you can see the picture of the mason had his, uh, weather enclosure so they could work, uh, in temperature-controlled area. This is the first floor of the public safety building. This is the day after they poured the slab-on-grade in the main level. So the white you see on the floor is, they wet cured the concrete to make sure that, uh, minimized cracking. Uh, so now, uh, as of this week, they are laying out all of the, the track for the wallframing that's about to go up on the first floor of this area, and then all the plumbing and electrical and ductwork will all follow that. Uh, so it's, it's a pretty busy area right now. On the second floor, uh, you can see, uh, the ceiling, uh, it's a root wood truss, and they're putting in the, uh, grids right now for the, uh, drywall ceiling that's gonna go. Uh, that ceiling, then below that will be all the utilities, and then there'll be an acoustic ceiling below that. Uh, so that's going on right now. Uh, and the plumber is working, putting in the rough-in. You get the fire protection, uh, company is putting all their utilities up in the attic. Uh, so they're making some pretty good headway. Uh, town hall, as I mentioned, is a little bit behind, so the SIPs panels, uh, are now going on that, uh, building. The crane will return tomorrow. We've had quite a bit of wind over the last week, so it definitely delayed things a little bit on the roof. Um, but, you know, it'll go fairly quick. Keeping the same crew that's doing the, uh, that did the public safety building here, so they've already got a good system in place, so we think this is gonna move fairly quickly. Uh, we've already got the, um, window openings, uh, enclosed for, uh, being able to heat the building, so as soon as that roof gets on, uh, we'll be able to start to, uh, control the temperature. On the first floor, the slab-on-grade, they do have it isolated, that area, so they can keep that portion warm. Uh, they're gonna, next Monday, they're gonna be putting the slab in on town hall on the first floor. Uh, so again, they're moving at a pretty good pace. Uh, this is a picture of you standing in the front door of town hall, uh, looking straight out the back. The elevator on your, uh, left, and then the opening in the ceiling that's white, that's gonna be the new staircase. They'll take you up to the upper lobby and the, uh, the hearing room upstairs. Uh, this is what the second floor looks like right now. You can see all the trusses, and you're exposed to the sky right now, but the plumber is, uh, bringing in, uh, their supplies, and some of the layout for the wallframing has already begun. So our project website, we continue to maintain an update. Uh, we have a log, a blog, rather. Uh, we just had, uh, an update, uh, that we issued last week, uh, and then with the four that we have, uh, for the slab at town hall, we'll do another update. Uh, so please go there. We keep it updated with, uh, current photos and, uh, updates on the blog. Uh, project budget update. Uh, so I'll give you, um, an overview of, uh, where we stand. Uh, so I'm gonna back, I'm gonna go forward a little bit just to show you the summary, and then I'll come back to some of the detail. So this, uh, overall budget is in my month of reports. You can see that, uh, printed out in the monthly report in detail. It's hard to get it up on a screen in the size I can show it to you, so I had to break it out into multiple, uh, pages. Um, so, so far on the project, uh, we're about twenty, just under twenty-five percent spent, uh, on the project. So, uh, things are, uh, you know, moving at a rate of about, uh, four to five million dollars a month in the billing rate. Uh, that will start to peak out, uh, soon, and things will start to come down a little bit from there. Um, so, uh, spent to date is eighteen million, just over eighteen million. Uh, and then, uh, our total committed to date is sixty-five million, with our uncommitted, um, uh, just under ten million, uh, is uncommitted right now. So that mostly is contingencies and, uh, furniture that hasn't been bought out, uh, computer technology, things like that. We still have it awarded yet. Uh, so let me just give you, um, an overview here. Under, oh, the owner's project manager, under administration, uh, I'm showing you the lines that haven't been fully built out. So the two phases of the work that we're still open right now is the construction administration. Uh, right now, we're thirty-eight percent, uh, for our onsite representative and the work that we're doing to manage the project. And then we have our close-up phase, uh, has not been spent yet. Uh, architecture and engineering, um, we have about three-point-eight million spent, uh, with our architectural team out of a budget of about five million. Uh, they continue to service the project for construction administration. You know, we have, uh, meetings with them once a week, uh, and the construction team, uh, they have been very busy. And, you know, we have two full-time, uh, people working on the project from the design team, working through some of those shop drawings, uh, ARPIs, uh, so they're, they still have quite the workload. Uh, but they're, uh, they're keeping up with the construction team, which is good. Um, other project costs, uh, we have, uh, some line items within the budget, uh, like construction materials testing. Uh, we're coming to the end of what we have to do with that. So, uh, we have only spent, uh, just about fifty thousand dollars out of a budget of ninety-five thousand, uh, which is good. So we will still use some of it for testing the windows, uh, doing some roof testing. We want uplift test, um, and, so we will spend a little bit more, but we're, we're doing quite well on that budget. Uh, the tower, uh, we still have some money remaining, uh, in that line item. That's for the radio equipment, the antennas, that are gonna be installed by the, uh, fire department. Uh, so, uh, again, we feel like we're, uh, in a good position right now with budget on that. Uh, furniture fixtures and equipment, uh, we're going to start that process of procurement with the design team as soon as we finish the interiors, uh, or the finishes. That's gonna happen very soon. Uh, so we don't wanna purchase furniture too early, but, uh, we're gonna be looking to, uh, send out our bids for that in about, uh, two to three months, so we'll start procuring that. Um, so we, uh, other items that are, uh, still uncommitted, uh, audiovisual, uh, we just finalized the contract, so I haven't updated that to show that it's now committed. Uh, commissioning agent, they continue, uh, to service the project. We had a meeting with them today. Um, so, uh, overall, uh, in terms of the budget, uh, we are, uh, feeling pretty comfortable. Uh, our, um, let's see, show you contingencies, hard cost contingency, which is construction. Um, we put some of the savings, uh, into that, so we're at four-point-three million. Uh, and I'll show you in a moment where we stand with construction change orders. Uh, soft cost contingency is at two-hundred-and-three thousand. So overall, the project's, uh, in a very good financial position. And then we had a few, uh, transfers that we, uh, presented to the building committee in the meeting in, uh, November. Uh, we moved some owner contingency, uh, to cover some of the costs for the electric vehicle charging stations. That was just until we got the reimbursement back from the state. We're expecting nearly a hundred thousand dollars from the state for the charging stations, so we'll be able to repen, replenish that amount back into the contingency. Uh, and then, uh, owner contingency, we took some of that out to cover some architectural, uh, amendments that were approved by the building committee in November, uh, just ten-thousand-nine dollars. Uh, we're presenting to the building committee tomorrow night, uh, and we'll be asking for a few other transfers from owner contingency. One, uh, we had a stormwater peer review, uh, GPI, the town hired a company GPI to review, and, uh, we had some costs for that. And then, um, the architectural team, uh, also had a few additional services requests, um, from, uh, the last board selection, uh, excuse me, uh, building committee meeting. Uh, so that's the twenty-eight thousand for twelve, uh, that we moved there. Um, cash flow, as I mentioned, um, you can see the yellow line, the red arrow showing where we're at. You can see sort of the, uh, you know, how it's going to move. We've been tracking this. We just sent an update to, uh, the town administrator's office, and then at the end of this month, we'll be doing a very detailed, uh, study of cash flow to help with the, um, uh, figuring out when to, uh, procure the next bond, uh, the additional ten, ten million or, or it was nine, nine million five hundred that was approved at special town meeting. Uh, so we'll, we'll work with the town administrator's office on that, showing, uh, the various, uh, inflows of, uh, we have appropriations and earmarks and other grants that are coming in, in, in addition to the bonding on the project. Uh, so the additional services requests we have this month, we'll be presenting to the, um, uh, building committee tomorrow night, a request for GPI, that's our traffic engineer. They're, uh, helping us with the Mass DOT third cut permit. Uh, there's some additional work that we asked them to include, uh, the water connections. Originally, we're gonna have that as a separate, uh, permitting process, and we found that we could amend, uh, the original submission and do it all in one. So that's actually gonna save us some time and, and some money.
Is the expectation that those connections will be done before Mass DOT reappears one-fourteen?
They're ready to go with them as soon as we get that permit. Uh, we've been waited, we're in month fourteen, waiting for the state to issue the permit, so it's been a long process. Uh, we just heard on Friday that our last round of, uh, submission should have received comments on Friday. I just haven't had a chance to check in with them yet. I think this is the last step. It's been a long process with Mass DOT. So the answer is yes. Uh, we will make sure that those connections are done as soon as they raise, lift the moratorium to put the connections into the road. Our, our team is eager to get in the road and get those completed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, so we have an amendment fifteen. Uh, this was, uh, administratively approved, um, so now we're looking for a formal approval. This was for additional studies for the melt generator. Uh, so this is a little bit of a legacy item. This has been, uh, occurred in, uh, early November. Um, so I think that it's on your agenda tonight to have a vote, uh, to approve that. Uh, so I'll continue with my presentation, and then if you want, at the end, if you have any questions or, your vote. Uh, PCOS, uh, which are potential change orders. Anything in green has been approved and has been converted into a project change order. Uh, we currently have change order three, which is ready for, uh, approval, which I'll present to you in just a moment. Um, and then, uh, we have a few that are in review. Anything in yellow, uh, is being reviewed. Uh, we just received PCO fifteen, which I know Justin, uh, you and Bill have been, uh, have a lot of dialogue back and forth. I think the recommendation is to approve. Um, and this is for two-hundred-and-forty thousand, PCO fifteen in yellow, and I'd just like to point out, there's a corresponding credit of two-hundred-and-nine thousand for the lessening of the amount of electrical, uh, equipment, uh, cost on the project. So it's, the net difference is fairly small. And then other ones that we're looking at, uh, we have, um, there was a scope gap on, uh, some electrical scope. That will be covered under the GMP, the, the construction manager's, uh, contingency will cover this. Uh, so that's gonna be, uh, twenty-eight, which will not increase the project, uh, cost. Uh, PCO forty-four, uh, we have provided our comments. We believe this is not a, uh, cost that should be borne by the project. Uh, so that is being negotiated right now with the file submit trade. And then PCO fifty, uh, for roof drains, similar item. It's a coordination item, which will be covered by the, uh, construction manager. So it all, uh, after, um, quite a bit of work done on the project, we're only at a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars in change orders, which is quite small considering the scale of the project. Uh, that is owner changes, increases to the project, uh, value. Other items that I have in the columns, allowance allocations, GMP contingency, those are all items that are within their contract, and we are tracking every, uh, usage of them as we move along and we approve them. So the change order three aggregates anything that's been approved, uh, since the building committee, uh, approved the last one, uh, back in, uh, November. So it's been a couple of months. Uh, and so the net, uh, change on this particular change order is three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand. The prior, uh, total of all the change orders was a negative of, uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, and so that's why I report to you, there's only a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars of, of the added costs. So, uh, we would be asking for a vote for change order three. So while I have it up on the screen, do you have any questions on change order three?
What is the, uh, total cost of change order three?
Let's see, um, I don't know if I have the net...
Is that three-six-seven-seven? I was talking about the...
Oh, the sum. Sorry, the sum, uh, the added, uh, sorry, okay. So the change order three total, if you add all of the items above here, uh, they add up to three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand. The net difference is what I, uh, am showing you on this. Uh, of all the change orders right now, we're sitting at one-twenty-eight, uh, eleven dollars.
Okay. And if I could ask, you, you had a list of where you had the green and yellow and change orders. The other items that are white, those are potential change orders that you just haven't reviewed yet?
Uh, they have not been presented to us. Uh, so our construction manager reports to us, uh, weekly, sort of their PCO log, and they'll, they'll enter an item that may, they think has the potential to be a change, so they'll, uh, they'll track it. Usually, there's a discussion on it. Some of these will not yield anything at all.
Okay.
And, you know, so we, we wanna put them up on here, and when we know a cost, I don't know if I have any estimates, no, I don't, in any of these. Sometimes, yeah, let's see, forty-eight. Uh, PCO forty-eight I have here. Um, there was this potential, uh, pending cost, that we were able to work that out as nothing, so that actually goes away.
Okay.
Um, and so these will, sometimes they, they pop up, and then they'll go away because we resolve them, and then they might be, uh, become a different item later on in the project, or be voided out.
Okay.
Yep. Good question.
I move change order three.
Second?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, no, unknown motion.
Sorry.
Would the motioner be, um, willing to make it contingent on building committee approval tomorrow night? Because normally, building committee sees these items before the select board, but because of the schedule, they're seeing it tomorrow night, so...
Thanks, Ms. President. Yeah. I'll take the motion to, uh, review change order pending tomorrow. That was my motion.
That's my, that's my second.
All right. Uh, any other questions? All in favor? All right, proposed? Done. Pass your hands.
Chairman, I move that we approve context amendment number fifteen in the amount of two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars.
Second?
Pending building committee approval tomorrow week.
Second. All right, motion and second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Done. Pass your hands. Great. Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
So I have one question on the...
Great.
You mentioned the bonding of that extra money, but we may not need it. We have to first see if we're truly gonna need all that much, right?
Yep, that is correct, and, and so while Brian's here, I was like, um, you know, give him an attaboy in somebody who is, um, publicly in front of the camera, because Brian is a true pro. He and his team have done an excellent job helping us advocate for the town and the people in the building. And so when we secured that additional, almost ten million dollars at the special town meeting, um, the directive from my office wasn't, okay, we can spend down to the penny for this remaining ten million. It was, how much of this ten million can we hold back and not have to spend or borrow? Um, and so Brian and his team have done an excellent job in that regard, and I think, um, especially within the context of these meetings, you see a lot of us coming forward with an additional, you know, ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollar expense, but we don't see a lot of the forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollar savings, some of which were highlighted this week. Um, and so, I mean, that's a very long answer to a short question, but the answer is no, we're not taking that full amount.
But we won't know the amount we need?
I couldn't, I wouldn't offer... Yeah, I wouldn't offer anything up this early, but, but I can tell you with confidence that we're not gonna take that full amount. Um, and I think the other element is, uh, making sure that we are, the end result, that it's a good product, and that we're, you know, we're not looking to deliver, um, an escalator here, we're looking to deliver it. Um, I think more so is more appropriate. And so, you know, watching that bottom line, to make sure we're not cutting the product.
So, to meet our cash flow, we might take a ban, and then when we know how much...
Right.
Then we go to bond.
Exactly.
So, yeah, it, it's, you know, when Brian referred to, you know, a bond, it was really talking about a ban short-term.
Thank you.
So that, you know, to, you know, and then we know what to bond when we finish.
I'm sure it's Hilltop that we use. Um, has Hilltop given us any guidance of where they think, you know, with their crystal ball, when would be the right time to actually finish the final bonding of whatever gains that we get through?
So that's something we're watching, and that's, um, things have been extraordinary. It was all filed, um, and with, with the change of administration, a lot of factors, so they've been trying to figure out. So they haven't offered, uh, any guidance, so we have a little bit of time. So we're, we're trying to watch as many indicators as we can, and we're trying to take the most advantageous time that we can, uh, but it's kind of a weird time to borrow.
But, you know, we're talking about sometime twenty-six.
It's a, it's a words out, yeah, so we're hoping things will stay alive.
Well, I assume that ban, if banned, it takes maybe sometime late twenty-five.
So we, we have some time. But the important message is, is that we're really working together, collaborating to save as much money as humanly possible. Um, I think we're all part of it.
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah. Sure, I like it, sure, yeah.
Okay.
And I, also, big shout-out, senior staff and folks around town spending money with our businesses, so thank you very much.
Appreciate the mail tax, especially.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm gonna have to, uh, do local establishment now. I'll do my part.
So, and you'll be at tomorrow's, the building, building committee meeting as well?
Yeah.
They need, they need a shout-out, too. Their work didn't end just when, uh, we broke ground, so, uh, thank you to those, those individuals on the building committee as well. Okay, thanks, Brian.
Brian, thank you. Thank you, appreciate, uh, your time.
Okay. Good. All right. Next, we'll go to item, uh, four, which is a department head update from our planner, Anna Burry-Carmer. So, if I'm not, if you're comfortable?
I'm gonna...
Oh, we use this?
Yeah. Just leave that on, right? Thanks.
Uh-huh. Good luck.
So, well, and I've got set up here, so it'll, it'll take a minute. Most happy speaking, so, so a little, uh, down there. So, what we're, what we're gonna be going over tonight, um, there was recently a joint meeting between planning board, zoning board appeals, uh, Mass Planning Committee, and the Oracle Housing Trust, talking about some of the planning-oriented initiatives that are coming down the line. Uh, we have a little bit of a backlog, um, in some areas, um, that impartled a result of a transition in the position, but also just reflective of the fact that a little bit of areas, uh, also we did very much of a crossroads. Um, and a lot of the, the problems that we're seeing are modern problems with modern solutions, um, that I think when viewed through the lens of planning, it, it's not quite so simple to talk about it. So housing crisis issues, affordability issues, um, some comprehensive zoning issues, and some things, um, related to various, um, reports may have expired in the next year or reports that are going to expire in the next two or three years, and those are some of the items that Anna is set to tackle. Um, and so with that said, it looks like you're up on the screen.
Yeah. I think we're ready. Thanks. So, yeah, I just wanted to, we'll start with kind of, um, a big picture look at what we have coming down the road for the planning department, um, the work that, I'll, I'll talk through some of these specific initiatives, and then, um, like Justin mentioned, we kicked off, um, the zoning bylaw review, um, just last week with the board, so give a little bit more detail on that one in particular, but to start us off, I want you to go through high-level, uh, what we have, what we're looking at for this year and beyond. Um, this is kind of about a year and a half in front of us on the screen, and just shows a little bit of how these projects will hopefully fit together. Um, each of them have their own process, and they have their own sort of, um, especially public engagement process, but I do think they're all related to each other, and they all kind of work together. Um, and so it's, it's really helpful to think about them as kind of a collective. So just kind of kicking off in January, like I just mentioned, kicked off the zoning bylaw review. Um, that's gonna be a comprehensive look at our zoning code. Um, we know that there are some things that we need to update. There are just some general updates and some housekeeping kind of things that, um, we wanna stay on top of, and then there might also be, uh, some recommendations from some of these other plans, so those would also be integrated into this comprehensive update. Um, you can kind of see my estimates of the, like, a little bit more public portions of these projects. I put them in a little bit of the darker color. Um, if you can't see the difference, that's not too important, but usually, those projects kick off, and that's a big, um, like, a lot of public engagement. For this one, I think it's gonna be a significant amount of background work, and then in sort of the middle of the project, um, we will really have more of the public process, although there will be public opportunities, um, throughout for review, engagement meetings, things like that. Um, the second one I have here on the list is the northern corridor study.[1789.86] The second one I have here on the list is the northern corridor study. This is to basically take an examination, look at the best uses of land along the northern corridor, so North Main Street up to the north end of the line, thinking about zoning in that area, thinking about economic development, ways in which we'd be supporting economic development there, looking at some parcels of interest for redevelopment, and if any rezoning recommendations were to come out of that study, again, those would probably be integrated into this comprehensive zoning bylaw review. And we would be looking at probably maybe twenty-twenty-six for those recommendations at town meeting.
So Lena and Justin. So northern corridor, west of the corridor, I guess, however you want to call it.
Northwestern corridor.
Yeah, the northwest corridor. It's called the, in overlying corridor. Can you, give us kind of a flavor of what that public input phase, the darker pink, I guess, color, like, what are you envisioning for receiving feedback from abutters, businesses, communities, or?
So I would imagine something low and formal, forum style would be appropriate. And I think what we just touched on is the fact that there's a lot of people that currently exist in that space. And so we don't want to have that conversation in the vacuum with a small group of people and make a determination of what that area of town should look like. We want to open that up as much as possible. And we want to incorporate the thoughts of the people that currently own property in that area or run businesses in that area to see what we can do that would be helpful for them instead of telling them, oh, we're here and we're on that. But also the residents at large that may not necessarily live in that area, but it's still part of their town and it's important to see, you know, the rural agricultural character of Middleton is preserved. You know, maybe, you know, we're not going to put a casino in down there or something like that, but would be appropriate for Middleton. But I think a lot of that's going to be listening, you know, if you have any thoughts on that, Lena.
Yeah, I totally agree. I'm hoping that we would, once the project kind of kicks off, that it would be an open conversation, that there would be public meeting opportunities for folks to come and contribute, potentially also, you know, survey or like a on-your-own-time sort of input that we can put together and share that out with folks. I definitely want to be hearing from the folks who live in that area, business owners in that area, and anyone in better.
The same point on the town square, you know, there'll be a similar community input section here, but is the plan of when that town square, you know, that part of the corridor review happens, is that can also happen simultaneously with discussions and planning for current police building, current memorial hall, and the fire station?
Yep, that's, that's correct. So the timing of that is intentional. It will coincide with, you know, us leaving the memorial hall, for example, and going up the street, but also private development, the old bridge project there on the corner at the former Angelica site. There are a lot of things all happening at the same time. If you look for Bird's IP with that section of town, and you were to look at some of the big anchor parcels there, they're all flipping over in the next two or three years. And so you have a couple options there. You could do nothing and see what happens, which, which doesn't really seem like a good approach or, or through the lens of planning, do your best to try to, you know, put an RFP out for the memorial hall parcel, for example, or if you also saw the public process that unfolded through the ZDA and points in conjunction with the select board regarding the Angelica site, and trying to find a way to help shape that project in a way that's advantageous for the town. And so we'll take the same approach for that town center, town square study as well.
One of the things that I'd ask is kind of the, the work that you and Anna, those are doing right now in discussions, for example, with the current owners of the former Cadillac motel, is also right in the center of town, there's a parcel in a building that has basically been vacant for a long period of time, right near the entrance of the fire station, brick building there. I'd also like to see if there's a possibility that discussions could happen with the owners there, if there's something that, between zoning both there and past there, zoning changes and/or economic development efforts that could take what has been, for all intents and purposes, a vacant building with a couple of tenants that have come and gone, but mostly vacant during that hot time, if there's something more attractive that would fit to both the future of the center of town, but also economically would make more sense.
And I think best use is something that keeps coming up in these conversations for both of those areas in town, is that whether maybe someone there is that truly the best use for that parcel in this town in twenty-twenty-five. I think sometimes the answer is no, it probably is not. And so we're going to try to take a look at a lot of those, piece them together, those various points of the map to try to help those property owners find a path forward.
For example, right across that building is the critical towns parking lot that, I don't know if there's ever like more than one vehicle that's sitting in that parking lot at any given time, you know, if that could be put into the mix as well, if there's opportunities, both would have to be adjacent.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. So that kind of wraps our, the more study focused projects. And then the other projects that we have coming down the pipeline are more townwide planning projects. So we have a housing production plan. Middleton has had a housing production plan for many years. They usually run for five years, and so we update them every five years on a cycle. Our current plan actually ran until twenty-twenty-four, so we'll be looking at the updated twenty-twenty-five for this next housing production plan. I'm tentatively kind of mapping that to start in the, in the fall with a kickoff and the Affordable Housing Trust. I expect to be really involved in that process. In all of these processes, I'm expecting all of our boards to be involved, but definitely that one. And then kind of looking ahead ahead to twenty-twenty-six, I am thinking that our master plan update, we probably want to be kicking off that process in twenty-twenty-six, and that would be looking at master plan for twenty-twenty-eight for kind of tying all these things together and looking comprehensively town as a whole, all the different priorities, how do they work together?
Can I make a comment on the, on the master plan? So the prior master plan did, a lot of things in it don't really fit, it seems like. So what can we do differently this time to, to ensure that we get a plan that really is, fits better for our town? I don't know why that one is such a bad fit and why that happened and what we can do to prevent that with the new one. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm throwing that out there.
So there's a couple of different factors. One of them is the consultant, and it kind of, that helps determine what, how up later you get in the end. And so putting together an RFP and having a review process criteria is, I think, will help you land on a consultant that may add the more desirable outcome that's more reflective of Middleton, I think, as one piece. The other one, similar to these other initiatives, is getting as broad of an opinion as possible, making sure that it's not just, and I don't mean this about the prior process, but not the same people in the room every time who, I think it's thrown around on occasion if somebody has an agenda, but it's, I think it's a preference that's more appropriate, but also a limited viewpoint on certain things that I think about asking, should be certain questions, whether it matters to town, you'd all have a different perspective on it. And I think the more people we can get in that process, a more comprehensive master plan you can have that's more reflective of the communities' goal would be my hope.
And, you know, it's the public input and the members of the master plan committee driving the consultant instead of the consultant driving them. And because, you know, I've been, you know, and this happened a few years ago at the same time period, it was a planning project on Bridge Street in Salem and downtown Danville, two very different community, you know, types of, you know, places. Same consultant that was spewing the same things as to whether it was appropriate for these two different neighborhoods. And if each of those groups went along with the consultant's viewpoint, it would not turn out well. It's sort of, you know, the committee and the townspeople need to drive the process, not the consultant. The consultant can help shape, can help draft, you know, but what goes into the plan is really, really has to be driven by the committee and the community.
That's a great point, Paul. And I think it would be helpful to understand and to say out loud, to document the areas in the past master plan that has just not fit or both want, wish, character, or whatever the community, let's document that and call it out. And it's not a finger pointing exercise. It is what it is. I mean, a master plan is really a snapshot in time, aspirationally, and I think looking at what has not worked in the last master plan process, let's call that out. So both future consultants that will be getting, but also the committee members that will be involved in that will also, let's say it out loud.
Yeah. Good idea.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think I do, thank you for bringing this up. I really want to drag both. These are all public processes, so we're going to be looking for feedback on all of them. I don't look there yet, but hopefully by, I would say, February, beginning of February, I will have on our planning board website or planning department website have a list of these initiatives with updates of where you can find it, more information about them, as well as how you would feel like if you want to be up to date and receive information, how you would want to receive or give it, but that's one of my goals.
If I may to, Anna, something that we have from before your time that the board will recall, we had a group of people that we were reaching out to regarding the Angelica's project. We have a group of people that we reach out to for like pedestrian work. We have certain neighborhood groups, so all that kind of stuff lives on and we'll pass that along to Anna too. So if there are people who previously reached out to us and want to be engaged, we'll capture those people too.
Awesome. So if we're okay on time, I'm just going to give kind of a very high level, touch on some high points of the zoning bylaw review process. So I will give you all just kind of a little bit of a brief version of what I gave to planning board, Affordable Housing Trust, zoning board, and master plan committee last week. So in terms of zoning, where we're at in general, this is everything that we just talked through, but there are a couple of reasons why we want to update zoning in general. There's housekeeping, general upkeep, court of security and readability, and then there's revisions to help our zoning go to line with state federal guidance. And then there's also an opportunity to introduce new initiatives to particularly support the town's priority and the town's goals. So any one of those reasons might be why we're updating the zoning or all three of those reasons most often. There's a couple of different types of changes. I find it really useful to separate them into technical changes and policy changes. So these are the kind of things that you'll see coming, coming down. Technical change is usually like a, I want to say easy, because they're not necessarily easy, but they're usually a little bit more straightforward and they don't affect the application of the bylaws, might just be consolidating or reorganizing information. And then there's also policy changes, and those are generally the changes that are going to affect how the bylaws are applied. They, they might be too more procedural, or they might be more prescriptive, as I was mentioning, kind of to, to support new priorities, to, to help the town get to their core skill. A quick spotlight on the process. I think that many of you are probably familiar with this process, but I find it's helpful just to kind of go through it because you will be involved in any sort of bylaw review. The first step actually of updating a zoning bylaw is that the change must be initiated and has to be initiated with the select board. Doesn't have to be initiated by the select board. There are a couple of groups that can initiate this kind of change, including you all, but also the board of appeals, a landowner who will be affected by the change, a group of registered voters, the planning board, or regional planning agency. But all of those groups would have to initiate by kind of submitting to the select board the, the change. At that point, the select board would refer it for a public hearing by the planning board. The planning board would hear it at a public meeting, just following all the same public meeting laws that they're required to follow for every public hearing. And then they would make either a positive or negative report, or they'd just go report. At that time, it would move on to town meeting. Town meeting would then vote to approve the change by either two-thirds or a majority vote, depending on the type of bylaw. After town meeting, if it's a positive vote, then the bylaw goes to the attorney general for review. Pretty much the attorney general is reviewing to ensure that all the procedural elements were followed and that the bylaw doesn't conflict with any state or federal regulations. After that, then the bylaw is published and posted, and then it becomes effective, retroactive to the date of town meeting. So that's a kind of quick snapshot of the process. This does take some time to go through, and so that's why we are kicking off a conversation now for bylaws that we may not be seeing and voting on at town meeting until twenty-twenty-six. But a lot of these things are complex and like I was saying before, we want to have a lot of opportunity for public engagement and time to kind of get it right before we start this process. And so a lot of what will be happening over this year, twenty-twenty-five, will be exploring the kind of context of where we're at, looking at changes and kind of running through to see which ones we were actually going to be proposing. What we've done in the past, just to summarize, our current zoning code was adopted in two thousand and five and amended in two thousand and eight. We've made minimal updates since then, so there are some things that I, I don't want to overlook or let go. There are some things that probably would benefit us to change, just to keep up to date. And then this process, I, I'm not stepping in brand new to. We, we've had some efforts already. There was a zoning bylaw review committee in twenty eighteen that was, they put together and then they completed a zoning audit. So I have the results of that zoning audit. Those will be integrated into this review as well as a comprehensive review, which the town actually secured funding for in twenty-twenty-three. So all of that's kind of fitting into this process, and then we'll move forward from Just to wrap us up here, what we're looking at for twenty-twenty-five, we just have one amendment. It is based on the change to the FEMA flood insurance rate map, which was recently changed. So we'll be looking at that to make sure that our bylaw is in alignment with the map. And then in twenty-twenty-six, like I said, we'll probably have many more that we're talking about throughout the year. These will be, probably, most of these would be coming from the planning board, but, you know, as I said, anyone on that earlier list would be able to initiate a change or a, or a concept to consider. So these are some of the ones that I heard and we sort of looked it on with the groups of boards last week. This isn't a comprehensive list. This is sort of step one here. So right now I'm working on compiling the list and then I'll be drafting a schedule of when the planning board or other boards would be likely to talk about these in public meetings.
Okay?
Yeah.
Two questions?
Yeah.
One, could I ask you to stay for the next portion of the meeting?
Yes.
After this here, but then, thank you. Two, having been on that bylaw review committee, when it comes to zoning noncompliant because of a change in the law, is there a resource you use to find that out or is there notifications made? Or is the only way we find out about it when we go through our zoning laws and, and then look at items and then check and then probably find out we've been out of compliance? Is there any resource that, that you use or?
It is, I would say, it is typically up to the town to, yeah, to be identifying those things. I, I don't think there are hundreds of thousands of them, like, I'm not expecting to find that. Usually if there is something, especially something statewide, there's a lot of guidance that came from the regional planning agencies that would let folks know, hey, this is something that, you know, the change in the state law, it's going to be something that, you know, the zoning code is going to need to comply with. More often it would be things that are just updated. So something that maybe we put a timeline on when we introduce the bylaw. And then because you have to vote on a change of the bylaw, it just hasn't ever been removed because it was never voted on, but it's, it's not even, like, it had an expiration date in the, in the bylaw. So those I think would be the more common ones.
That makes sense too. I don't think we performed a, you know, a review. So what we did, there was a number of things which, but now to this point, then it would be like you said, more, you know, a little easier to. be like you said, more, you know, a little easier to stay on top of, I guess, but.
That's enough.
There was a lot involved, I don't know. But thank you very much. Okay. I appreciate it. Any other questions, anybody? Okay. So next, welcome our esteemed delegation to this evening's meeting. Representative Brad Jones and Senator Brewst, welcome gentlemen for, for attending. Did you have a plan or not a?
I can run through a couple of items. If you'd like to. So there are, and thank you for joining us this evening, by the way. I appreciate it and the full recognition that it was relatively short notice.
Yeah, thanks.
So I know you have a very busy schedule, so thank you. So item five on the agenda of this evening, MBTA zoning update. Just in, in general, we wanted to provide an update on various happenings that have occurred since our December 12th special town meeting. We'd need to come in to the residents and we'd update them as things came down the line. And so to answer your question, Mr. Chair, there are three things in particular that have occurred. One of them is the update on the attorney, attorney general versus county board member. A lot of folks, you know, so many words hanging their hat on that or questioning people like the, of the MBTA zoning law. The second piece is the emergency 3A regulations that came out of that SJC case. And then lastly, just a quick update on the Masarox grant that we have that is in this. So I wanted to, I guess, provide a general update on those items, provide a forum for the board to have a conversation as well as the person members of our statehouse delegation. But I, there's no expectation of any votes tonight or any action items. It's just an active vote, conversation for now. So if you'd like to take them one of the down.
Sure.
Sure. So just as a, a brief update on the Supreme Judicial Court, and I don't want to give a full breakdown, but it is available online, but there's been a lot of articles in various forms of press that have kind of covered it. So one of them in particular in the Lowell Sun boiled it down fairly well, in my opinion, excuse me, citing the Sun as a, as a good lullaby and I'm sure it's had some flashbacks. But the Milton case has been decided and on the whole, it seems the judge is siding with the state when it comes to the general validity of the MBTA communities law and the fact that this is a mandate. The minority of communities who did try the noncompliance rule will now be faced with the task of possibly starting the process all over, but they did apparently buy themselves some time. And I think that's kind of take away the years that unfortunately where we are today is very much where we were on December 12th. The, the law was upheld. And so what we're looking at is what came out of that. The piece that was not upheld was the way that law was implemented. And that's kind of the, the conversations that are being had. It's my understanding that the only thing that needs to be done there is the same law goes forward, they just have to roll it out a certain way, which I'm sure the state will do. So as part of that, they did release emergency 3A regulations. There are two important takeaways from where I sit on that that I want to put this light board's eyes on and, and deadline oriented. So one of them is within 30 days having to submit a new action plan process that we've already done. And so now that deadline is 23 days away. So we want to take a look at what that would entail, what that means and if the town even has an appetite to engage in that process. The secondary piece is an expectation that the town or towns that are out of compliance put forth a MBTA zone, approved a town meeting and submitted by July 15th of this upcoming summer, which in my opinion is a fairly ambitious deadline, given the temperature in the community right now. And so once again, no action needed this evening and as well, I'm going to make the community aware of those deadlines and provide for, and help you discuss any of those elements if you so desire tonight.
I don't think, I don't see anything has changed.
Right.
All they did was move a couple of deadlines up. The people in Middleton spoke, they have no interest in this and to put a plan with a potential load in July or anything like that, I, I think for us it's wait and see. We, we voted, we, we're against this. Just start anything with another plan. I think we have to shift our focus with our representative and our senator to see what we can do to help them maybe to put a bill forward. I, I know Brett Jones has two towns that voted no, which is.
The two in 12.
Yeah. So half of your district voted no, so you have more interest in overturning this law probably than anybody in the state legislature. So I think rather than waste our energy on trying to put another plan forward or anything like that, we should have every inch of our energy working with our delegation to see if, what we can do to help them to try and get this thing overturned. That's what the people said with their, anything, any energy wasted on anything other than that, I don't understand at all.
So, yeah. And I didn't see anything, I mean, I, I read what was out there and, you know, and I read the inclination from town council. It, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be, it doesn't seem to be anything that I think we're going to be interested in, but other than other, other avenues. I mean, it hasn't changed and it's the same thing, it's just they're going to tell them to go back and cross the Ts and dot the Is. Doesn't change anything for me either.
So I, I think the concern, a couple of concerns that I had from the beginning, I mean, I've talked to both of you about this as well as Sally. Every community that's in the MBTA, you know, I'm not telling you anything, it's being treated the same. And what works for Somerville doesn't work for Middleton, doesn't work for Lynnfield, may work for, I don't know, Beverly or Salem. And, you know, I really wish what they'd look at is true direct MBTA service and I guess they're hanging the hat on is we get the ride service here. Other than that, you either have to go to North Andover or Beverly to step on a commuter rail or there is one bus line in Dantlers that runs over to the community college. Other than that, it's, we're talking TV, I think, for bus service. You know, there's really no service here. And the whole genesis of the MBTA zoning is build multifamily housing adjacent to public transportation. If we had public transportation, if the old Howard Manning Station was still operational, there'd probably be a logical discussion in Middleton. Secondly, I mean, by kind of through the SJC and now the 3A regulations that were obviously ready to go once that SJC was, ruling was dropped, they're basically pushing the deadline seven months. And the only way, even if we wanted to, and I think this board and Shirley Town Meeting doesn't have an appetite, but even if we wanted to go through and try to be in compliance, we'd have to move where we had proposed this to a completely different location because we're kind of coming back to double, somewhat I do triple jeopardy of requesting something that Town Meeting has said no to. Now, there were some subtle changes between the first and the second plan, but I think the farce with the overall law is what we proposed would have never been built. I mean, high rise building would have to be taken down and every private condo owner would have to be purchased and bought out for that to be rebuilt. Same with the low rise condos. So, you know, it's kind of like a wink, wink, nod, nod. Here's what we proposed. We know that nothing will ever be built there and the, and the state told us this would pass muster. I really wish that, you know, the state and more so the Healy administration yelled, you know, uncle and backed off of their taking fire grants away from our fire departments and that was a huge uproar. And I actually think that was the first time that the administration blinked, including the previous administration, and this one's bipartisan, blinked. And I, I hope what this will open the door to the opportunity of looking at a town like a Middleton that really has no direct service. Secondly, a town like Middleton that has little to no public sewage. Where we proposed this, there actually is public sewage, the only small little sliver in town. Even if we wanted to go back to Town Meeting, like I said, there's no appetite. Even if we wanted to go back to Town Meeting, where we would propose this, it would be pretty darned impossible to actually see it ever come to fruition. I guess we could come up with another area that would be completely impossible to build so we could pass muster. It's not going to pass Town Meeting. So I feel that, and we tried, it's not for a lack of try. There's a lot of, a lot of blood was left on the floor of Town Meeting at both meetings and a lot of angst has happened in town over this. And I just wish that this administration and the leadership in the legislature would realize that this is not directed at you two. You guys have been pretty forthright on this and have been very aggressive in trying to make changes, but the reality is changes are only going to come unless the administration wants to make changes. I get that, I understand that. Been in the chair you're in. But, and I guess I'm kind of asking you, like, if you were in our chair, what would you do? Like, what would you recommend? Because, I mean, we're, we're walking away from a $2 million grant that I've said very clearly is the chance of finally having a positive effect in that intersection, that we're missing out on. It is what it is? It is what it is. You know, I'm concerned tomorrow that future grants that we don't even know about are going to be on the next cutting block. Hopefully they'll blink like they did over the fire chiefs grants, but you know, the reality is.
That was a pretty quick retreat.
Yeah, that was a pretty easy retreat.
That was Iowa.
You know, and, and again, that's one that showed up, laid in the form, wasn't, and not in the regulations, the emergency regulations, not in the statute, so sort of, hey, we're just going to keep adding these things without any process. I know of another instance, another community that represent that had an ADA grant for handicapped accessibility. You don't get it if you're not compliant, knowing you need to be doing. So I, I mean, you're right, preschool choir.
I'm waiting for the day, and, and we're not getting ready to have any type of school construction, but I'm waiting for the day that school building authority gets put on the list.
And to me right now, the biggest question, and there's a variety of bills filed to, for repeal, to change the communities that are in, to have direct service. I mean, you guys get the ride. I represent, we don't get the ride. So, as does Bruce. And we've tried to legislatively. To me, the biggest question in the decision, sort of, I kind of leave it as sort of three legs. One is the law has been ruled as constitutional. Two is that the attorney general can take enforcement action. And three is the regulations were not the right way. They're, they had them pretty much ready to roll out on the weekend, a week or 10 days afterward. So they clearly were saying, okay, this, we listened to the arguments, maybe there was, maybe there was, you know, validity to the antithesis, what, I've held the validity of the fact the regulations were ill the right way and we're ready to go. To me is, the biggest question is, what are the remedies the attorney general can seek if the attorney general does in fact sue communities?
So those regulations that you came out with after the judge's ruling, are those, because that still didn't follow the process, I don't believe that the judge laid out. They said this is an emergency. So those temporary regulations and they have a plan to do the proper process or what is the status of that?
They take 50 days. Yeah, I believe it was 60 days and the goal is to have the Emergency Regulations Act as a bridge to the Permanent Regulations so that they can actually follow the Administrative Procedures Act and have a set of long-term regulations that are compliant.
So there's, there's an opportunity for input from you and from us and everyone else.
Exactly.
So that, that's where all of our energy needs to go is probably to them because the emergency regulation is temporary anyway. So I think.
I don't think there's going to be a lot of daylight between the emergency regulate. This is like the federal government when they do interim to final rules and regs. Usually when they drop an interim, there's no daylight between interim and final. Maybe if you find a spelling error or something like that, they'll fix it, but I mean, so, you know, Bruce may be able to explain a little more, but my concern is what are the remedies that the attorney general, are they simply financial, you know, assuming the attorney general prevails in the case? Are they financial? Are they, we can impose the plan? We can impose their own plan?
That's what I'm hoping.
No, I, I'm not. I'm saying, I, and that's a question, maybe, you know, in, in discussion with town council or town councils, in the Bay.
The court in the Milton case said, you know, we don't, we're not deciding that whether or not, you know, the state has the authority to enforce a plan on a community because they didn't need to get there. But that is really the only remedy. If the state says has the authority to, you know, pass this law that creates this district, the only remedy for that community or the communities aren't voluntarily adopting a plan is to have a plan imposed on them. And that's a disaster.
But that hasn't, I don't think that's even been.
No, it hasn't.
Just floated out there from anyone with authority to float that as far as I know.
So my, my reckoning.
Well, one can think down the road and.
I just, with eyes wide open, it's, it's part of a discussion that has to be had because is it, again, strictly, I apologize, but is it a financial remedy? But we're going to fine you X amount every day, you're, you're out of compliance and it's going to go off the cherry sheet. It's probably going to be more sticks because it's surely, there's no carrots out there. I think it's going to be more, and I think it may be the AG with the administration saying, we're just going to add more potential funding opportunities, grants and other, I mean, I could, small grants, I think of every community gets a, based on population, a council on age allocation every year that we get based on our senior population, that we fund programs, COA, in the past, we've used the dollars to buy a new van. That's where I think the future of this is going. I, because I think if the, if, if the decision is made by the AG and or the administration to say, well, we're going to go the next step and actually step in and put in place zoning in these communities, I would question, and it will probably be immediately back at the SJC, what about all of these communities that are outside of the MBTA district? Now you've got, you've, you've built, you've built the system.
My organization was putting them in there too.
Well, if that's the case, then there's not going to be grid programs because there's going to be a lot of communities that aren't going to participate.
Well, I think it's just to highlight the, the idea that this is sort of arbitrary and capricious, so, you know, oh, you're MBTA and it's based on the fact that you had a rail station or rail line 50, 60, 70 years ago, you have no services now other than getting the power to drive someplace else.
So the judge, because that case was really specific to Milton, that was Milton's case. In his decision, he said that the, the town of Milton benefited from MBTA service. He put that in his decision, that towns that benefit from MBTA service. He, judges choose their words carefully. He did say that. It just be, we're a little bit different than, than Milton because we, we could make every good argument that we don't benefit. It sounds like the Brennan could make any better argument.
Milton's, Milton's argument was also about how they defined the MBTA service. Whether it was a trolley or, and they were thrown in a category. If they were thrown in a lower category, that was part of their argument, they probably would have been able to comply or whatever comply more easily than what we have.
So it, so things are being thrown out. They might do this, they might do that, this might happen, that might happen. Right now, we're at where we're at. In the past, right now is to do whatever you ask us to do to help you to try and overturn this or will these permanent regulations come in to have them more fit towns like us? I think that's, that's the job, rather than us guess what's the attorney general going to do? What grants? What's this? Right now, this is where we are. We need to.
A lot of things, we're just waiting, we're obviously trying to make this guy, you know, from the extreme being repealed to, hey, if the grants weren't delineated in the statute they shouldn't be in the regulations, that that shouldn't be a best of the legislature so that you don't have. I mean, yeah, the legislature decides. You decide to add more, like in recent bond bills, there were some grant programs that were added to the list.
Yeah. I want to bring something else up too. We have a fire chief here. So when they, thankfully, when they were going to take the funding off of fire.
Safe grants.
The grants. Yeah, thankfully you guys.
Last, last Thursday.
Right. But just that made the townspeople admit to look at what does our fire department do? And it's, it's come to light that, that a lot of the towns are upset that we service the jail. We have to do, and the fire chief can probably chime in on this, that we, we service our fire, we have three firefighters, I believe, on duty at a time. If we service the inmates of the jail, we, and I think most people, I know most people in town and I would think most people in this room, we don't want to do that. And I, and the fire chief can chime in on that. And I don't know if there's something that, that you can do to help the town of Milton or at least get something out of it or, or a home rule or something or change a lot. We, we, the town of Milton is right about the stretch, too thin to service the jail. And it was very insulting when the. And it was very insulting when the state said they were going to pull firefighter gear funding. Here we are, and the chief can chime in, how many times, we're going out, take care, with, with three people on duty, two of whom go ahead and pick up an inmate at the jail, drive him to Beverly Hospital, we have to pay overtime to other people to cover. Somebody in town could be having a heart attack, and primary people are not here. And I've got more comments in the last week about that, than any, than, than task classification. I've had more people comment on that than the facilities project we're building. People at Middleton do not want, they're public safety, people servicing the state, the state or county jail. I guess the history was, I'm sure I can correct me if I'm wrong, that we used to at least get, they would lease us a police car, and we would get a police cruiser from the jail, and then a new sheriff came in and said, you know what, I don't have to do that anymore, it just stopped. So we get, other than some repairs on some of our police cars, I believe we get nothing, is that?
Yeah, I mean, it was arbitrary where the sheriff was, but there was, you know, you know, in-kind services, whether it was radios or, or a cruiser, or one year, we had like a plow truck and different things that helped us. And then it wasn't until the, this latest situation, where the whole regional, whatever, Beverly pulled out and everything, we had everything taken away from us, like Hollywood doing our budget. And those were things, those were things that we had for a long time. And now, yeah, we just get tune-ups and, you know, oil change, which is great, but, you know, we own two ambulances. We're a small town, we should only own one, we own two, because we got to service 20 man a gallon. And not to mention Gregory Street, the juvenile-
They would even give, you know, maybe they give us an ambulance, though, maybe, and I don't know, but something has to change, we can't go on. I don't, if you have anything you want to add?
And when they pay us, it's Medicaid rate, not what it would be for a job.
That's a whole, another discussion, that, whether it's the jail or not. But I don't want to lose sight of the fact, I would give actually you two, calling you both out specifically, a big thank you, that coming July 1st, we'll finally, for the first time since we've been the host community of the jail, and the host community of the DYS facility, actually getting a pilot payment from the state. We started this process, I started it back in 1995. A big thank you, I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, I want to call you both out specifically, with a thank you for working the angle on that. That was not an easy process, I know. And for us, we understand it's not going to be a huge amount of money, but it's actually finally, for the first time, of a recognition, Middleton, that like, you're housing two big state facilities, and we're recognizing on a pilot payment on that. So a thank you for you on that. But I guess, to kind of wrap this up in a bow for me, my, my concern is that unless this administration and future administrations stands up and says, okay, we've, we've done the carrot, we've done the stick, there are still no's. Middleton's not in the vast, vast minority. We're in the minority of the communities in the MBTA district, but there are a lot that are standing up that have said no. And I would expect by 7:15, 25, there's probably going to be more. I just hope that, whether it's a safe fire grant, or council on aging grant, you know, taking the fire grants away, we would have backfilled it in the town. Wouldn't have been unaffordable, but it would have come from somewhere. I'm concerned about the future of much bigger grants. Again, we're looking to have the roof approved through SBA to fund this. Two years from now, they could be saying, or a year from now, they could be saying no to SBA dollars. In a program that every other community in Massachusetts, even those outside of MBTA can access, but we could potentially in the future be saying, said no. That, that would be a hard nut for us to benefit from. That would be really, really difficult. And, and I'll tell you, if anybody in this board wanted to go back to town meeting again on MBTA zoning, he would walk out the door with our heads in it.
History is that we, things that have come up for a second, and one occasion a third vote, those subsequent votes have all been through citizens' petitions. The conservation commissions that, you know, wild water regulations for long watering, town meeting approved. Citizens petition, we sent it. Lots of people asked the board to bring them forward again. We said no, the people have spoken. Then in 2021, there was a citizens' petition. And that's away recreation area. Master Plan Committee proposed it, town meeting said no, citizens' petition brought it back.
And-
And he said no. Yeah, town meeting said no. MBTA zoning, you won't be moving forward, town meeting said no, citizens' petition brought it back, town meeting said no. There's no way this board is going to-
No, no, but what I'm saying is, and I would argue, given a citizens' petition, it's, that would be dead, it'd be dead on arrival.
Yeah, there's, there's no, we would undertake that, there, there, you know, isn't anywhere.
Can I get back to the ambulance issue? Is that something you think you can help us with, with the state, to either get something out of it, or what? My preference, and I think the townspeople in Middleton's preference would be-
Well, good thing, Jeff, the way, the way patents are going these days, the jail may be empty, may not get any calls, so maybe it will be released. Between one administration or another, so.
So I think the short answer is yes, we can try to work on that, try to get some accommodation. I don't want to lose sight of the point that Brian made, in that we were able to work, and Brad really took the lead on this, but as a delegation, we were able to incorporate those two facilities into payment in lieu of taxes. So for the first time, the community is now going to get a guaranteed revenue stream as a result of hosting a facility.
How much a year would that be?
I don't know the dollar.
You know, Brian, at all?
Well, a lot of that is dependent upon how much the pilot line item is funded, and then how many properties it covers. I mean, do I think it's going to fill a huge hole in our budget? No, as I said, I think some of it is somewhat symbolic, that we finally, you know. But I don't think they have a choice in the jail. We didn't have a choice in the jail.
But I think that the point that I would make is that unlike some of the other things that we could talk about that have come and gone, and been somewhat transitory, this is something that's statutory, and so it will be built into the funding formula for the pilot program for the perpetuity into the future. And that's important. With regards to the ambulance, that's something that we can certainly try to work on. There are other communities that get payments for hosting a facility in a different way. That's something we could explore. It's not something we haven't explored in the past, we can continue to do it. The demand on the fire department is significant, we understand that, it has to be acknowledged, and we can continue to raise that issue initially.
What I think we can do on, as the other MBTA, or that, if we can be evolving, whatever we can do, just let us know, because we want to work together.
Well, one of the things that's been helpful in the past is that Justin's predecessors have given us an accounting, working with the fire department, about the cost, so that we can have good facts to work with, and that'd be a good place to start, if we looked at the last couple of years, for instance, so we can get some average figures. That gives us some good ammunition to demonstrate just how much of a burden it is on the town.
So, you know, with other jail facilities, do, it'd be interesting to find, how many of the host communities run their ambulance, their own ambulance service? And what kinds of costs, you know, they incur? Because, you know, if you have a contract with somebody, it doesn't really impact your, you know, budget. Each jail has medical staff, you know, as part of its staffing. Why can't they own an ambulance and transport a prisoner that needs to go to the jail themselves?
So I'm not aware of any correctional facility that operates its own ambulance service, nor has a contract for one. But I would disagree a little bit. I would suggest that if a host community has a contracted ambulance service, that's still a cost to the town, and probably a significant one, because that contract is probably in place of having its own ambulance service. So it seems to me that all of the host communities bear that cost. The question is, are some getting relief and others not? And I think that's the operative issue.
It's not just about the dollars, it's probably more, even more than the dollars, and the chief, if you want to chime in, is the, the risk to our citizens, that, that we, we could have something serious happen to one of our citizens, and the response time could, I would assume, could be less because of a call. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Chair?
Respectfully, we have here a little bit of-
Okay, okay.
I don't want, I want to tighten it up a little bit.
Put it on the agenda next, next, uh, sure.
But, but I think the point is that the court has ruled here. I would certainly want to consult with town council, but my read of the opinion is that the court did say the AG could ask the court to use its powers of equity to enforce a plan. I think that would be an extreme remedy, and I think the AG would be unwise to pursue it, but I do think it's available. And, and I would ask you to ask town council for an opinion relative to that.
The fact of the matter is, Brad, we've talked to council, I've talked to council specifically on that topic. And, I mean, the reality is, is, I say this to people all the time, past rulings, for example, the Dover agreement, clearly states that while we all like to beat our chests and say zoning starts and ends here in the town of, or the city of, wherever, the reality is, is no zoning is approved until the state checks the box and approves it. So while we believe we have total control over our zoning, we don't always have total control.
Well, I think it's more fundamental than that, Brian. I mean, the fact is zoning comes to the towns as a grant of authority from the state, not the other way around. And that's what this most recent case affirmed. I mean, you can even look no further than Chapter 40B, which is very controversial, but that's essentially the Commonwealth enforcing a plan against the cities and towns, that if you don't have 10% affordable housing, then a, an unfriendly 40B comprehensive permit can be filed. So in my opinion, even before this case was decided, it was indisputable that the state had governance over zoning matters in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The, the question really, I think, is more a matter of public policy, which is what is the appropriate use of that power to control zoning? And that implies several other things that you brought up, for instance, the one-size-fits-all question, which the administration did begin to address by creating separate categories, you know, of regional transit community, commuter rail community, adjacent. So it did begin to diversify and look at some of the particulars of the communities, rather than having a one-size-fits-all. But that's really where the rubber meets the road here. The constitutionality, I think, was beyond dispute even before the case was heard. I think it's certainly beyond dispute now. So the question is, what are the appropriate remedies, and as Jeff is pointing out, where do we channel our energy? And obviously, Brad and I have tried to modify this law. We've taken the same path in the House and the Senate on two different occasions. We tried to get additional time for compliance. We actually had what I think is a very comprehensive and reasonable plan to allow the communities to appeal for relief from the mandate, based on specific constraints, not having enough drinking water, not having enough wastewater treatment, not having adequate transportation infrastructure, all of the things that are causing a lot of communities to say that we cannot comply. And unfortunately, there was absolutely no appetite in the legislature to make even those modest changes. I debated one of them for literally a couple of hours on the floor of the Senate, and to no avail. And so I wouldn't want to leave you with the impression that there is political momentum or support building behind changing the law, because I don't believe the risk.
I agree.
And so I think we need to think about what the right strategy is, because obviously, there's a lot of hand-wringing that's going on, and a lot of concern. And obviously, in this community, folks do not want to comply with the law as it's currently written. And that leaves us in a, in an odd situation, or a difficult situation. But I did want to point out that out of the 177 communities that were affected by this mandate, 117 of them have adopted zoning to comply. And so that's something that is often pointed out to us by the administration when we try to have conversations like this one. Because, you know, and now you could argue that they didn't do it willingly, and they didn't want to do it, but they did it.
I wonder how many of those had town meeting, though, vote for town meeting, and how many? Because here, if we were a city council, it would have got adopted.
Yeah, I understand.
Probably four to one.
But, well, let me guess, you were the one, Jeff.
So I wonder how many of those had, if they had true town, if it was really a citizens' vote, how many of those would have known?
I would say, my two towns, Reading and Linfield, have approved it. Linfield's open town meeting, Reading's represented town meeting, so.
And, and the majority of communities in the state are in fact towns. So, I mean, we could debate governance, but the fact is that when we try to have a conversation like this with the administration, they will say that 117 of us opted the zoning, and 146 are in some form of compliance. And so while there is opposition, it's very strenuous opposition, there is also a lot of compliance on the landscape. And with that in mind, you can understand the administration's position of not being too receptive to ideas for change.
And, yeah, I think, yeah, the feeling was that the state shouldn't be telling us what to do with our zoning, which the state has that authority, you know. Earlier in that town meeting, we adopted, you know, some regulations around the ADU law. There, the state is telling us what to do in all our residential districts. Nobody got up and said, the state doesn't have the right to do it, because zoning is local. So it is something that has, you know, inflamed passions.
There's no doubt about it, and again, I would say, I don't think that this is a matter of constitutionality. I think that's beyond dispute. I think this is a matter of what's the appropriate use of public policy, and that is in many ways a political question.
And we're in the very much, in the minority, so we're not going to really change much. That's what basically your guy is telling us. There, there's no appetite in your, each of your chambers to build support to do it.
I think that's, I think that's an honest representation, based on conversations we've had. I mean, and I know you can say to the CEO, oh, this 40 community is not complying. I already called you guys four of the six. So it's one representative has four, I have two. So it, it's a relatively small number legislative. There is limited appetite in your legislative chamber to make a change to this, like, there's limited appetite in our legislative chamber to actually knock the map something.
So it's trying to find some, be a safe harbor that makes everybody is unhappy, mutually happy, that, that mutually happy.
The other thing is, you know, you know, some towns locally had 118 units that they wanted to have. Middleton, they said 750. I wonder if that was, you know, I don't know how that process formula came to be, but, no, I mean, it seems like, you know, if, if they were wanting to push something across like that, you know, zoom out, two fingers, zoom out, all right, you know, we're going to get, you know, I mean, 750, even though it said you can count the existing, it still leaves, you know, room for a couple hundred units, whether we have the land or not, so.
What's frustrating, again, is, is it's not a dynamic process, it's one-size-fits-all. And there's no look at what a committee has, has either done willingly, or experienced in the past five, or 10, or 15 years. And if you take a town like Middleton, the development that's gone on, in Middleton, the past 20 years is, is almost exponential. You know, and, and it's frustrating, and it would have been, you know, I, one of the amendments, the thing that I was having, is the state take a look back. It's, we added 1,000 units of housing, let's say, two years ago, but none of that counts towards the idea that we need to build housing, and I don't think that's right.
Do you think you could try to get an amendment forward to include the jail in the, that's the most affordable housing in the state, right?
There you go.
Because you, maybe, try and get an amendment in that the jail, probably could come-
Doesn't cost you anything to get in, right?
Well, yeah, except it costs us a hell of a lot.
Bruce is going to get you on an ambulance, all right?
Maybe that's, that's an amendment, you could propose that towns that have a, cities and towns that host the jail, let them include that in the, in the zone. And then maybe, if we got that, maybe then we could pass a zone.
So, so it seems to me, if there's a fruitful path for us to explore, it's probably going to be with alternative compliance in some way. I mean, I would postulate to you that I don't think that this law is actually going to build that much housing.
I agree. The, the vast majority of the communities that are similar to Middleton, that have passed this, have done exactly what we proposed.
Yeah, basically, pay for it.
Here's where it is, we're showing you where we'll put it, we know, you know, wink, wink, nod, nod, that this will never get built there, because it's either already built out, or through other factors, water, sewerage, et cetera, will never happen. Et cetera, will never happen. So we're be hit with, yes.
And that's part of the problem is that we're spending a lot of this time and energy to not build housing. And, and that's very counterproductive. And it would seem to be far more productive to look at tools like the Housing Production Plan that's included in chapter forty B, for instance, by which you can achieve a safe harbor from the adverse provisions of the law. If we were to look at it from a standpoint of how do we actually build housing versus how do we adhere to strict compliance with this mandate, I think we'd be spending our time and energy a lot more wise. The question is, can we get there? Can we make that paradox shift?
And if I could ask one more request of you two, and I'd say the same thing to Sally if she was here, is, so, you know, the reason why the citizens' petition came back was, you know, we were successful on the Mass Works grant. That, not that you're home with nothing better to do and watch our select board meetings, but the things that we've said pretty clearly, and I've said, is this is, I think, a once in a generation opportunity to fix that intersection. By the way, a state road intersection. This isn't, you know, this isn't Boston Street only. This isn't, you know, this is a state roadway intersection that has an effect on every community that abuts us. I mean, we are a big bottleneck, and that is the center of the bottleneck. And through the forty B process that we turned into a friendly forty B, which I always forget the actual term of it, that this board unanimously approved, we were able to get access to land that would have, that would actually solve the problem, not just for Middleton, but for the Commonwealth on a state roadway. That's part of the reason why the state approved the Mass Works grant. This wasn't just like, hey, look at this town, this is an interesting grant. They read it and said clearly, this would be transformational. The grant's gonna disappear like Cinderella that dropped her slippers on the stairs very soon. You know, I'd just like to put in a plug of, you know, if the state can look at understanding that we have this opportunity with a project that's gonna happen, have access to additional land that could actually expand the number of lanes, both on Boston Street and on one fourteen, and change the, the three intersections that you go through, lighted intersections, that the grant is now no longer going to be available. This is really a state problem as much as it's a Middleton problem. And any help you can make, do when you have the opportunity to talk with Mass DOT or anybody in the transportation environment, and I'm not saying you don't do that, you guys waited on that grant for us as well, and I appreciate that, but anything you can do on that, because, you know, very shortly that window's gonna close and, you know, we may still have a future easement on that property, but it's gonna be hard to approve that intersection after that property is built up.
And I, I'll just add to that while we're on the topic, for that particular grant award, there's a deadline for the end of this month and a re-contract for that. I haven't received a knock on the door or a phone call yet, and somebody can probably know if they're gonna take that grant away. So I'm gonna go forward with that process if it's okay with the board, and just keep going until I'm told that you can't get any more.
So I'd say no. And Justin, if you would keep us in the loop with that so we can assist.
Yeah, hopefully just the fact that that way it's moved down a little bit more.
Okay, I appreciate that. And that was some of the hope is that the communication we received said pretty clear that there is expectation for compliance by the end of the year, but where that has shifted, I would think that wouldn't apply anymore for any grants of order prior to the Ash-VC decision, but I would receive any official confirmation more or another. Hope you hear anything.
No, happy to work with you.
Yeah, because clearly going forward as a result of the, the recent safer fire grant, I mean, you know, there's no list of grants they're gonna withhold. You just gotta find out when you apply and they tell you no.
So in the emergency regs, there actually is a list, but they also allude to the fact that on a going forward basis, any agency that considers in the application process housing policy will be allowed to consider compliance with three A. So there is, there's a list, but it goes further than the list.
So is, is the argument on that, the reason why they pulled up fire grants from that list is because it wasn't housing related? Or was it, I think it's not to here, they look like fools.
I, I think the, the optics were not good, but I think you could also make the argument that since the emergency regs provided for an extension to comply, that no community is out of compliance from that perspective. So if you wanted to strictly interpret. You know, they, everybody's in compliance, at least for right now.
Well, at least until February thirtieth.
Thirty days from, well, twenty-some odd days from submitting a new action plan. Yeah. But I, but I think Brad's right, the, the optics of that were bad. We made the statement publicly, I think you all saw the letter that we sent, that no firefighter's life should be put at risk because of housing policy. And I believe that, whether it was compliance or no compliance, that shouldn't be the case.
Yeah. Thank you for the.
And again, yeah, thank you.
Well, just, just credit there to Chief LaColts and the Essex County Chiefs because they alerted us to that immediately, and that's the reason we could act so quickly. And I think if our response had been delayed, the result of the initial decision might have been allowed to settle in a little bit longer. So the fact that they alerted us to it and we could take action as quickly as we did made a big difference.
I mean, I don't say we're much, ladies and the givers, here in the name of the state of the state.
See, like it.
No, they, they weren't.
Where they moved it.
Very talking territory.
And we're, and you know, currently looking at another one that'd go mass trails, but it would be for the purpose of purchasing equipment that, you know, we've learned recently from the firefighters that it would be move us to, to own and maintain and.
So Mr. Chairman, conclusion, I'd say the thirty day deadline that's now twenty-three days away will be nine days away under February fourth. So I think at that point, kind of, there's the appropriate beneficial determination. It'll at least give us another two weeks to see what else is gonna come down.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And then, you know, after that, we just got a wait to see and, you know, unless, oh, anything we can do to help.
I, I do think.
I see where this is gonna go, like we're not gonna.
I do think, though, with regard to the, the more permanent regulations, offerings of written comment may be helpful for the future to get it on the record, that there is some degree of dysfunction with regard to the application of this law. And even if those comments don't prevail, I think they will serve well in the future to happen.
Anything else?
Thanks, guys, for coming to our conversation.
Thank you very much.
Please allow us that you came.
Really? We're honored to work with you and honored of the partnership that we do with you. So we appreciate the chance to be in the conversation.
Been involved with us enough to know that we take serious our responsibility that we have here. So, that being said, appreciate it in return. Thank you.
All right. Okay, and now discuss the, item number six was our annual town meeting, twenty twenty-five, this will be twenty twenty-six budget calendar. That was handed out to us tonight. I don't know if there's any real discussion we want to have on that at all, Justin, or?
Nothing in particular as info. I'm gonna want to think Jackie, um, for, for, you know.
Do we give it a good two shot?
The one time I go on a tag.
I was jealous of them. Which will be Tuesday, late thirteen, something like five P M. At the Howman School, we'll make sure that you do something. Thank you. Okay. I think it'll be all right. I think I'd like to, I'll take a pass on number seven.
It'll come up on Monday night.
We're gonna come up on Monday night. Okay, item number eight is, I guess, a discussion on transfer station fees. I know we just increased them.
I'll pass it over to Jeff.
Please, what do you have on that, Paul?
Thank you. So as the board may recall, based on the recommendation last year of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, the Select Board of Finance Committee adopted the new trash fee policy last year. So the document in front of you tonight in your packet is just a manifestation of us continuing to execute that policy, which is an old tradition. So we took all of the numbers from Superintendent of Public Works, Paul Goodwin's budget, and plugged them into the formula that Solid Waste Advisory Committee has devised. I met with Sarah again today. We looked at expected sticker count. We kept them steady from what Mr. Erickson had put in last year in his capacities, both co-chair of income and chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So we held for a more conservative amount of sticker sales based on the last few years. And when we do that calculation, as the board may recall, only things that are relative to dumping, so the Covanta charges, the recycling costs, the things that are directly created by those who use the transfer station are included in the calculation for the sticker fees. Things like landfill monitoring, which the town is beholden to do regardless, remain in the budget on the tax rate. So tonight, just to get it in front of you for an initial review, would be the twenty, fiscal twenty twenty-six. So this is for the season that we begin sales on in late summer of twenty twenty-five, for the validity date of sticker, October one, twenty twenty-five. So that's the season that we're talking about, these taking effect. This year, we're at one eighty on the first sticker and forty-five on the second car and the recycling respectively, based on, we are looking at seeing some significant trash cost increases, which I know Paul's worked really diligently to keep in check it, but we are beholden to our vendors on that. So that calculation would increase to one hundred and ninety-five dollars for the first sticker and fifty dollars for the second and recycling sticker respectively. The other piece of that puzzle is that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee's charge has been meeting one more time at this time next year. One piece of feedback that I did hear from the Treasurer Collector's Office is there's a good system that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee has put in place, but we also may not want to be adjusting the sticker price every single year. And I know Mr. Garber brought that up as the Select Board lays onto the Solid Waste Advisory Committee as well at their meeting. So we're looking to bring this change this year, but I think the anticipated recommendation is that then we would hold for a couple of years because we don't want to change the price every year. A, that's confusing. B, it will, I think, overly keep up with any increases. So I think the goal is to make this recommendation for this year and then ask the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to do a bit of a moratorium for a couple of years. So, and then look at it again in a couple of years after that.
As part of that discussion, but then there was pros and cons to it. If we knew we were gonna hold the price and do a two-year sticker to avoid the big rush following October, but then it was brought up that people move, then that might not work because someone bought it two years and then they move, and you could elaborate on that.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. We talked about it. I think logistically that would be a challenge, but I think to your point, Jeff, like that's what we're talking about, a moratorium on the price. So rather than someone purchasing a two-year sticker for double the price that we're talking about today that lasts two years, do we hold the price next year?
Right.
You know, so I think operationally, we have a little bit of feedback on the staff side about like how that would be put in place, but I think your point was well taken that we don't want to like be increasing it every single year. I'm also really pleased to report that the Treasurer's Office is working, and this was reported to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee as well, the Treasurer's Office is working on bringing on a software program that's also going to increase the turnaround time, excuse me, decrease the turnaround time and increase efficiency when we get into that busy time in September, October, when everyone is renewing their sticker. So we are very mindful of the wait times people saw this year. I think part of that is just the general postal service times in Middleton are not as efficient as we would have hoped they would be. But we are also looking at other options that are as cost effective as possible to reduce those wait times because that was a piece of feedback we certainly heard a lot with their voters this year.
So Jeff, is that, in, you know, you look, you look at, the committee looked at one year's cost to set the sticker. Since you're talking about trash disposal cost, that's part of the contract and the price per ton is in the contract, correct?
No. We won't get the price until after the budget is set and getting ready to go to town meeting because the Covanta contract, which is the major driver of this budgetary item, is based on consumer price impacts every year. So we don't know until it's too late to make changes.
Go ahead.
So we have to make a best guess. So for example, this year, Paul put in a three percent increase. He's been in the business for a very long time, has a lot of contacts, and he does a lot of research before he makes that forecast, but unfortunately, we don't have a year-to-year prediction.
So since you're predicting one year, predict two years, average out the cost so you can get a sticker cost that you'll hold for two years. But look at, you know, this, this projection looks at the trash disposal costs for next year. Also look at trash disposal costs for the year after.
Okay.
And if you can, if the committee can do that, what's the two-year cost and therefore what's the sticker cost over two years with the sticker cost being the same?
So we could certainly look at that. It is not, we're just following the policy that we approved that was their recommendation last year, which is why it's my recommendation and I think a staff recommendation that we hold the price next year. So we'll ask you to amend the policy to that effect, but we can certainly see what it would look like and maybe bring an update to Budget Saturday to that effect. I don't anticipate Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting again prior to that, but I'll look at those and I'll work with Paul. I don't know, there are certain things you just can't project out because we don't know, but we'll see if that's something we can bring on Budget Saturday.
But when we do a, a, any budget is a projection, we don't really know what it's gonna cost and, you know, truck repairs, but we budget something. So if we, and not necessarily, you know, for the next, you know, this could be for the next time we set a sticker fee, we look at a two-year or a three or whatever length of time we want to hold the sticker fee steady.
Okay.
When we have this discussion during the budget session, do you have any line of sight to number of stickers sold so far and what it looked like at this come last year?
Yeah, we're pretty on track. Our average low is in the fifteen hundred, which is why we use that as a plug for sticker. I do believe we've, we've met that already at this point because we've seen a majority of the season already. So we, I apologize, I can get these numbers for Budget Saturday, I talked about it this afternoon. We did exceed that fifteen hundred as of today, but I don't know that we'll go much above that because, you know, people get a new car, we don't charge for our replacement. It's just anyone else that comes into town and moves into town late in the game. So I think fifteen hundred, when we looked at it today, felt like this, a safe number. Last year at this time, excuse me, last year for the full year, we were at sixteen hundred, but we haven't quite figured out why there was such a spike because that's not typical. That's a high.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out is, cause, you know, I think there's a, there's a point here where, and there's plethora of options for individuals to have private trash pickup at their home. And there's a point here where sticker cost reaches a point where people are gonna start saying, maybe I just want to go to private pickup. And I'm just wondering if we can also continue to track that, whether it's a, every two to three years or an annual discussion that we have on rates, at some point, you charge to a point where people are gonna start making decisions one way or the other. People may, I mean, I'm somebody that has private trash pickup, but I also have a sticker. I'm just trying to figure out if, if it's actually starting to happen.
And we'll have a look for Budget Saturday at like the twenty-year history on stickers that we've been tracking. I'm just getting the numbers for this year, so is that a bit plugged in? And I can also, through the night headout, like we have looked at the last couple of years, our tonnage and things like that as well. So we'll have, I'll have those just as.
It's still vastly more money, as you know, for the private pickup.
It is. Yeah, I, some of it is a convenience factor.
Right.
And the change in the hours may have an effect one way or the other too. So I just think that's a function we should continue to start tracking.
If, if you're gonna have the history of stickers, you add in the history of single family homes, how many they, and it is, the assessors, Brad can give you that year by year. And therefore. And there, you know, it's really to see the percentage of houses, single-family homes that had a sticker.
No, we, we looked at that, Costa, when we did the giant trash presentation. It was not last year, it was not the year, was it the year before? We did a really deep dive on trash one year, which created like the impetus of Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So I'm not gonna probably have that in time for when you get your budget binders ahead of the meeting, but before Saturday, I'll get that organized.
There's so many statistics you could go by neighbor, I mean, I'm sure neighborhoods are skewed.
I appreciate you calling out the statistics you want because they're not like pull a rabbit out of a hat statistics. They take a little time and effort. So I appreciate knowing and if there's anything else that comes to mind, I'll get it organized. But I just want to set clear expectations that you'll have a head of Budget Saturday, but not one of the binders.
I could say the committee was pretty confident that the, this proposal was the right proposal. They, they listened unanimously.
Yeah, and it'd be interesting, as you're looking at the past sticker utilization, also looking at recycling stickers, because for a long period of time, there was no cost for recycling stickers and obviously what-
And we don't have numbers for the years that it was no cost.
Yeah, I mean, but, oh, we don't?
No.
So we just kind of like, somebody came and we just handed it to them.
Yeah, and like we verify them if they had a trash sticker, but we were just handing the stickers out. So like I actually got the first car sticker and then later, later, the second car sticker data because Paul's predecessor, whose name I'm forgetting right now, unfortunately, he had included the sticker counts in his operating budget submission. So I was going through the physical binders of the 2000s to get all of that data. It's not something we had accessible. So we can look at recycling stickers, but only on about a five-year cycle. So it's not as telling of a picture as the 20-year cycle that we have on trash stickers.
And during that period, the cost of managing recycling has gone from, when I was first on this board, there were some other materials that we could actually break in on. We're losing money on all of that.
Yeah, correct. But I appreciate the heads up. And if there's anything else folks think of that they would like for information in advance, we can certainly include that.
So looking at this, going this forward, while at the same time realizing that we're not gonna be raising prices.
Every year.
Right, and probably for a couple of years until we can get this in, then it's smart to do it that way, where we took such a big bite this last time. Okay? Thank you.
I apologize. Thank you.
All right, and we can move quickly now to number nine, a couple more licensing items. A review for a new common vehicle license for Walgreens. Number 10949, Manager Destiny Baldi.
Did they not please break something?
Yes, so this was a new license application. We did not have a license for them. We did make them pay a late fee because we had never seen them before.
But they should have had one.
Yes, they should have.
Because CBS has one.
Correct. Well, anyone that sells things that people order.
Really like a soda or chips, like Fritos.
Correct. Like a gas station having like a candy bar area is part of what triggers it. But we did charge in the late, the maximum late fee because they came in so late, but we have no other fee-related consequences at this time.
Have we looked to see if there are any other potential locations in town that should have common vehicle licenses? It doesn't?
Chetel and I have talked about that concern, but we have not had time in the office to do the deep dive. Certainly does bring an area of concern that like we all know Walgreens existed and then has not occurred to any of us, that we've never seen them on the list. I mean, we all look at that list, you know, how many times a year? So something-
It doesn't have to be prepared food. Any food?
Any food that some of the-
To be restored or gas station vending issue.
Okay, so you get a motion for a Walgreens. I move that we approve the common vehicle license for Walgreens. Second. Motion, a second. Further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. And another one, review of a one-day local license application for party accommodator at 177 North Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, can we hold this item? We're missing something that the board requires for the one-day policy.
What company's doing it? Do you know?
Yes, it's the Board of Trade Gala is being held at that location.
What is that location?
Salem Metal.
Oh, okay.
But they're missing a component and a review of the map and-
Is it time-sensitive this money?
Well, their event is on February 13th, so we have Budget Saturday and we have your February 40 meeting. So I'm confident between those two days, we can get it taken care of. I'm just waiting, I did not see the map get submitted in time for your meeting tonight, and I can't submit it to the police chief for his review without the map.
All right. Do we have any updates or announcements? I have one. So, Dambus Dam is rail trail, the Middleton rail trail will again unite for a second annual chocolate walk hosted by both Dambus and Middleton on the section of rail trail from Gregory Street to the Leahy, Beth Israel Leahy Building on Dambus. So we had that last year, it was a lot of fun. What you do is you come down and park at either end, at the doctor's office end or our end and walk across the town line and there'll be areas for you to get some chocolate refreshments that have been provided at no cost. At least on the Middleton side, Winfrey's Chocolates was, again, one of the ones, is the one that's providing that for us.
You're gonna call the, pray for yourself?
Yep, it'll probably be, it's February 9th at 11:00 a.m. And the rate things are going, it'll be fine. You'll lock all of that. Sun's gonna shine.
Super Bowl Sunday.
But kickoff's not till 6:00 there, so you can go, you can get, squeeze in both. I'll be there, don't worry. Free chocolate. All right, so that's, that's fun. Just to celebrate the two towns working together as they did and keep it going for, for a good cause. Yeah, Brian?
I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I was actually gonna make a motion for the next item.
Okay.
So I would actually make a motion that we enter executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A2 to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel. This is regarding both Fire Chief and Town Administrator and that we will be returning to open session to take a potential affirmative vote.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All right, those in favor? We have to do a roll call vote now, every time?
Debbie is gonna call in.
Okay, she's gonna call in?
She'll call in on the telephone, but you do need to take a roll call vote.
Right now.
Mr. Chair, yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, Jeff?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, so we'll be going into executive session for the items mentioned by Brian and we will be returning to open session. Right? I'd like to return the evening's meeting back into open session. A couple of contractual items to take a vote on here. We have discussed contracts with non-union members this evening, and the first one is a contract extension for Fire Chief Doug LeCoulce.
For three years, FY '26 to '28.
Right, till FY '26 to '28.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve a contract for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028 with Fire Chief Doug LeCoulce. I know he's here in the room. It's amazing to think that it's been three years that he's been in this role. A lot of people that know Doug and know the Fire Department realize how lucky we are, but over the last several months, this fall, with the volume of brush fires that were happening, not only were we stating national news, but Doug was front and center on all of that and proof again that the town made the right choice of making him chief. So, honored to offer him, since he has accepted a continued three-year contract, but also the recognition of the work he's done, Doug, so much.
A second to motion and a sentiment?
And, you know, it's one thing that we have been lucky in this, the entire time I've lived in town, the fire chief has been, you know, a Middleton resident, you know, different, you know, people. And it's very comforting, you know, when you have a crisis, when you know the person coming to help you, you know, whether it's on the ambulance or the fire truck. And I've had that experience at my house where, you know, ambulances arrive and there's faces that I know and my family knows. So I think it's one of the great benefits of living in Middleton.
Yeah, I'll just add to it that we're very fortunate to have a department like that and it being administrated and managed by the chief. And we don't have to remind people that, you know, public safety-wise, we operated a staffing deficiency, so kind of extra thanks.
Yeah, we need to support the organization to get that department to the level that it needs to be.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry, roll call.
I'm sorry.
Is it gonna be a roll call?
Go ahead.
Brian?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am, yes.
All right, passes unanimously. Chief LeCoulce, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
And we'll do our best to advocate for making a difference on the staffing for our public safety, not just for you and the, and the department, but for the residents of Middleton.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, next item, we have an additional contract negotiation concluded with our own Justin Soltek, Town Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, similarly, I'll make a similar motion here for a period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. It was just a few short weeks ago, I believe, that we conducted Justin's annual personnel evaluation. And not only did you exceed on all levels, but I think this board was unanimous in its belief in the great work that you've been doing, also understanding that, you know, you stepped into the role a little over two years ago, I believe, where a lot of things were in flux in town, a large project that was getting ready to kick off that was unfortunately needed additional funding, a lot of other activities in town that we leaned in very strongly on. And what I've seen in the last two years has been absolutely fabulous. And I think the rationale of extending your contract to June 30th, 2028 is probably similar to what we just did with our Fire Chief. Probably the two easiest votes that are typically on, so.
I, 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 100%, I need to speak to that. I am 110% on what we have on the segment. Justin, you have exceeded my expectations, your, your commitment to the town, the town's people, the board, and everyone you serve. It, it has been a joy and a pleasure working with you over this time, and I hope that we're talking the same con, I, I, well, a revised contract, obviously, after 2028. I hope you're here for the long haul. You are a great Town Administrator, and I've worked under many.
Thank you. Yeah, they just, I mean, the morale in town, just all around town, the change, it was a drastic change for the better, in my opinion, and I'm very appreciative of the difference.
Same. It was mentioned during the negotiations prior that this board was firmly behind Justin and appreciative of the job he's done. I know we, you know, we've had a couple dust-ups here, but that's, that's how the people's business gets done. And I don't think, on behalf of, you know, everyone here, that's, that's what we do, to be responsible for you all, so it's important to know that, for people to know that they were all on the same team up there and those of you, those of you people at home. I just want to make sure that that's out there, to know that we're firmly committed to each other as well as to all of you.
And you've done a good job in the past, and this contract reflects that, but also the belief that you will continue to do a good job because, you know, we're paying a future performance, which we expect.
Very good, very good. All right, so I have a motion. I'm sorry if I missed the-
You did not.
I'll second that.
I also seconded it.
Oh, okay. So, Bester, please.
Brian?
That's a big yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a big yeah.
Okay, very good. Passes unanimously. Thank you all. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we return to executive session for two items, one of them pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel, and pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A6 to consider the potential purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property. And discussing that in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on any negotiation position of this public body. I also move that we do not return to open session.
Okay, remember second?
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Brian?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Myself, yes.
I'll be a yes, too. All right, so we go into executive session and we will not be returning to open session. Thank you.